Simsbury Board of Education, September 12th, 2017, Board of Education meeting. Welcome back!
[laughing]
Yay rah! So, thank you very much. I'm going to start with recognitions, please.
Great. So, we have three important recognitions tonight. We have our Teacher of the Year here with us this evening. We have last year's Para-Educator of the Year, and we have Deb Service here who is our Inclusion Specialist that received a really neat award, so-
Awesome.
We're going to speak to each one of those, and I am going to start with Colleen Thompson, our Teacher of the Year, and I'm going to embarrass you a little bit.
[laughing]
We're going to try. So, Colleen did a wonderful job at Convocation for us, and I just want to say that, Colleen, you exemplify excellence in every sense of the word. She's smart, talented, dedicated, and most of all, is entirely student-centered. So, in Colleen's speech where she spoke to our faculty as part of our convocation, she talked about inclusion a lot. She talked about teamwork, and she talked about the fact that our kids here in Simsbury demonstrate great character and how they work together. So, if it wasn't enough that you rocked the house with the speech, what Colleen did next was she broke into a song. And she started singing a song called "Be the Change," and before you knew it, to everybody's surprise, a few of us were in on it, but to everybody's surprise, kids just filed in the sides of the auditorium, sang along with her, got onstage, and it was just a powerful and meaningful performance that filled the room with great, great energy. So, we're going to show it.
And a few tears, too.
A lot, there were.
Not a dry eye.
For board members, for people at home, I think it's worth putting it up on the screen, playing through it, because it was one of those moments that I'm out today, and I'm out yesterday, and not a person I see doesn't mention how we kicked off the school year, and you were a huge part of that.
You know what, so what I didn't get to say is that the kids didn't know why they were there. The only thing I told them to get them there is I told them that it was a secret performance, and that their job was to make their teachers happy and kick off the school year.
Oh, wow.
So, they thought they were there to just entertain their teachers and, you know, start the year off in a good way, and I told them right before we went on. So, they were willing to be there just to sing for their teachers.
And happier when they knew it was for you.
Well, they were. They were. They were happy, yes. And we had alum and everybody. It was great.
Oh, dear.
Click on the other tabs.
Yeah.
This is video.
It's a video of it.
And then enlarge it on the bottom right there.
Higher.
In the black part, in the black screen.
[singing] Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you.
Love it. So, I gave you that one. [laughing]
Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you.
So, I gave you that one.
Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. Be the change you want to see in the world. Be the change you want to see in the world. And change will come to you. You know you're gonna make a change. And change will come to you. You. Be the change. Be the change.
So, of course, that'll probably affect, in fact, if you can end the Teacher of the Year. Nobody will ever want to try to follow that.
That's been the thing.
Nonetheless, we hit it big.
They're getting a lot of congratulations and then "Thanks a lot."
And, Colleen, we just received word that you moved on in the state competition to the next level, which is really neat, and I couldn't think of somebody to represent us better. So, we're so proud of you, and thank you so much for all you do and the way you kicked off our year.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the opportunity. I love working here, which I tell people, it's a true story. It's really been kind of a dream to work in Simsbury to the point where I'm not from here, and I found out that Simsbury existed when I started going to the Hart School in the summers, and I used to call it like the magical kingdom of Simsbury. I just thought it was this like musical, magical place, and then all of a sudden Rich Wells found me, and the rest was history. So, I'm honored to work here.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sue, I'm going to have you introduce Deb Service.
Great. So, we are going to continue in the theme of inclusion and all things wonderful with Deb Service. So, each year, the Farmington Valley Directors, they started this award in 2010 in memory of Tom DiCorleto. So, Tom was the Director of Special Education in Granby for over 30 years, and I didn't know Tom personally, but I feel like I do whenever my colleagues speak about him and they speak about his passion for the underdog and to really close the gap in so many ways for our students with special needs. So, this is a very big-time award for the Farmington Valley Directors, and when the criteria came out, Deb immediately came to mind. You know, Deb's been with us for many, many years. She's had such impact in the Simsbury Public Schools as Inclusion Specialist. Before inclusion was really what was good and right to do in the public schools, but Deb always knew that that was the case, and that is her passion, to make sure that that happens. Deb also has a huge role in working with our Para-educators in Simsbury, hiring. She works with me closely with professional development. She's also passionate about transition, the big T, as you've heard me refer it, and what students do with their lives as adults, making meaningful contributions to our world. So, with that, and Deb's over there getting teary, and that's not what I was expecting, but there's two plaques here, certainly one that we will hang proudly for the next year that shows that Deb Service is the recipient, and then this beautiful award from the Farmington Valley Directors. So, it's my complete honor to share this with you tonight, Deb.
Thank you, Sue. This is my 31st year in Simsbury, and I was a special ed teacher at Squadron Line School for nearly seven years, then Henry James for three years before assuming this role. And actually, besides being such an honor, I did know Tom, and for several years, one of the students on my caseload was a beautiful little girl from Granby Public Schools, and so I was at PPTs with Tom and had other opportunities to interact with him, so that makes it doubly special. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk about Paula a little bit, who I had a really cool interaction with today at Terrifield School. I was telling Tara on the way in, I was walking the hallways with Scott Baker, the principal, and Paula was walking down the hallway with one of her students, and he eyed me up and down, looked at me and said to Mr. Baker, "That's your boss." And went into a whole explanation on your relationship between the two of them. That was priceless, so.
So, this is our fourth year in participating with the Para-Educator of the Year Award, and I do look to Deb Service because she really leads this effort. So, each school in Simsbury nominates a Para-educator for us to consider for the district recognition, and it was just a very easy choice in making that Paula this year. So, Paula's been with us in Terrifield this year. She's taking on some behavior coach responsibilities, so working with our students who might have some difficulty regulating their behavior, and it's a perfect match for Paula. She just has this quiet confidence about her. Kids know that she means business, but they also know that she deeply cares for them. So, this was a very natural choice for us in Simsbury, and so with that, thank you, Paula, and congratulations. Well, thank you all very, very much. We're very fortunate to have you, and award winners that you are, we are so pleased and proud. Thank you for all you do. I will, the public audience, it seems to be, we've completed that aspect. I would like to take this minute to introduce our new Board of Education representative from Simsbury High School, Dylan Fitch, and we're happy to have him for the fall of this year. And Dylan, do you have anything you want to share with us today?
I would love to share some stuff. I hope everyone had a great summer and is having a smooth transition back into the school year. First, I would like to start off by saying all the elementary schools have had great successes with assemblies and welcoming new students. Many of the schools have around 40 new students in each of their classes, so it's very important to have these assemblies to make sure they feel like they're part of the community of their school. Also, all the schools around the district are having open houses and curriculum nights. I know that the high school has had a few for freshmen, sophomores, and many of the elementary schools are coming up in a few weeks from now. Last Friday, there was very exciting news. Toon Hills had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the school's new playground equipment. I'm sure it's being put to good use because of all the beautiful weather we've been having. And I hope everyone was training over the summer, because Latimer Lane is having the Run Back to School 5K to support the PTO activities, and this run will be taking place on September 24th, and all are welcome, and make sure you bring friends, family, and your running shoes. Also, at the middle school, students have been enjoying the almost-finished product of Phase II, the construction project, and as you know, it includes the refinished second-floor hallway and with new paint and new lockers, the new elevator, and the new nurse's office. And as a student that went there, the gym is extremely hot, or was extremely hot, so the heating and AC in the gym, I'm sure the students will be appreciating that. And the school is almost done with this construction project. The only thing left is three new health classrooms that are being installed. At the high school, Chromebooks are the new, new cool thing this year. I see them all the time in the library and their classes. I've used them in many of my classes. And also, fall sports are starting up at the high school, and I would like to give a little shout-out to the Simsbury football team, varsity football team, for the 42-to-7 win against the Hall football team. And that's it.
That was excellent. Oh, my gosh.
You're done.
We can go home now. I think we've got everything under control. We've opened the school report. Perfect. Thanks so much, Dylan. We really appreciate your efforts.
Dylan's going to represent that high school very well. I just want to make one comment about the convocation in particular. Oh.
Yeah, don't leave yet.
I do want to make a comment about you, too. Don't mind. I'll do that now. I just had occasion to, I had occasion to speak to one of Mrs. Thompson's former students, who happens to be a grandson of mine, and I told him about what happened at that convocation, and he texted me back immediately, and he said, "She is an awesome teacher." I just wanted you to hear that from her, but he will never forget you.
I saw Jacob at a choir conference when he was at Avon Hall Farms, and I was really impressed.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the only other thing I wanted to say was that our superintendent, Matt, made a comment at the convocation that was very, very inspiring to me and influential, and the statement that he made was, among many other statements, but the statement that really got me was when he said to the teachers assembled there and the staff, "We are here to do good things for other people," which is the definition of love, actually, when you think about it. And that was such a powerful statement. I'm a teacher myself, and that very same day, I went into my classroom, and I pledged to my students to do good things for them. Thank you for that, Mr. Curtis.
All right. I don't know how I follow this. Just, welcome back. Hope everybody had a great summer, and just looking forward to getting back into it.
I have another announcement.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
So, I'm going to beg your indulgence for a minute. This was my 19th first day of school as a parent in this district, and my last. So, as this year goes by, I will get emotional, and so I'm just going to get it out now. So many of you have had such an impact on my family, and we are so grateful that we moved here, and the school system has been so amazing. I sent my second daughter off to California for a year with Merrick Court, and she's going to be a team leader, and we were talking this last week before she left, because I'm not going to see her for a long time, and she said, "College was so easy compared to Simsbury High." She said that what she got here has stayed with her in so many countless ways. So, to her principal at Squadron Line, and Henry James, and Simsbury High, all four of my children have been well-served by all of you, and I thank you very much.
Okay, so I don't know if this is the best segue, but the community of care is going to be holding their first program tomorrow evening, and it's on stressing out. And not only high school students, but also college students and stress, and we're going to have Mark Lehman. Certainly, he serves on the committee, but he's a local licensed family counselor. We also have a representative from counseling services from the University of Hartford, and one of our school's social workers, Meredith Brockbey. So, it should be a very informative panel discussion. It will be tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the library, so that's the first announcement. And the second is just more good news from Special Education. We received word this week that Simsbury High School was named a national Special Olympics Unified Champion School. So, it is a national recognition. It really, they hold the champion schools up to very high standard as being exemplars for inclusion practices, inclusion of unified sports, also youth leadership, and whole-school embracement of inclusion. So, it was a really big deal, and that was just a great way to start off our week this week.
Congratulations.
That's great. Fabulous.
You're going to hear from me plenty tonight, so I'll just say welcome back. I'm going to go to the work of the board this week.
And I just love having our student rep, because he shares, or they share typically so much great information that I don't have to repeat. So, thank you, Dylan, for doing that. But last spring, every spring, we have our Connecticut Writing Project, and I was not able to share it with you last spring, but you can see this book is getting bigger and bigger, and what we tried to do is flag all of the Simsbury writers that have been identified and presented in this book. So, I'm just going to pass it around for you to take a look at it.
Thank you.
And as Neil said, welcome back, and we'll be talking later on this evening.
Thank you very much. Matt?
So, smooth opening, and we're looking forward to sharing our information. I did want to talk through a little bit of the reality of the state budget and where we are before we get into the school opening. So, I want to draw your attention to just a one-page handout in your folders and talk through a couple of quick bullets there. You know, I know we've continued to update you throughout the summer, and it does get challenging to try to follow the bouncing ball of where this is and where it'll end. There is a possibility there will be a budget voted on this week, depending on who you talk to. So, it's still quite uncertain. We do know that that October 1st date is a pretty crucial date. If they don't have something done by then, the executive order that Malloy put forward kicks in, and in that executive order, many communities, 83 in all, stand to lose huge amounts of municipal funding. We are one of those communities that would lose all of our educational funding in that scenario, which is over $6 million. So, we're keeping a close eye on where this is. Malloy put out a budget on Friday. Our sheet calls it the new worst-case scenario, for lack of a better term. It's not, in total dollars, as devastating as the executive order, but definitely has some implications that have us concerned and some things we need to think about. So, the talk of the teacher pension in that budget scenario is back. It's a different calculation, but we would assume in the current year, an expense of $819,000 in teacher pension, and that would double the next year. So, that's significant new cost, if that lands, that we would have to think about. It assumes an ECS, that's our educational cost share reduction, of close to $3 million. No change to our excess cost reimbursement. There were some changes earlier on, but that would stay status quo in this budget presentation. And then the last bullet, what I wanted to kind of draw a reference to is those dollars do fall in the range of the budget planning and contingency planning that we did with the Board of Finance. That being said, there's a lot of moving parts with that plan. So, we need to see where this lands, and I know that the Board of Finance has talked about pulling a meeting together that we could be present on, potentially on the 28th at 5:45, which would be here. It would be much better if there were a budget in place by that time, and we would be problem-solving from the lens of real numbers rather than assumptions. So, just wanted to tell you where we are. We're monitoring things closely, Burke and I, on a daily basis, but we recognize the challenges that are ahead of us. We're going to collectively, you know, go through them and deal with them, but we really, you know, it's imperative they get this done, and we can start our planning process, because there's so much at stake here.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of minutes from June 20th, our special meeting. We have Ms. Selena, Mr. Goman, Burke, Frank, and Tindell. Tindell, anybody?
I'll move to accept those minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? We can move on to our, we're going to move on to the personnel.
And as is typical for this first meeting, it's lengthy, so I'll try to go quickly. It comes in three chunks. The first is notice of intent to retire. This is from the clause in the teacher's contract that allows teachers to announce up to three years in advance that they will be retiring to allow us for some future planning. So, we have three in that category tonight. Patty D'Onofrio, a business teacher at Simsbury High School. We suspect she heard how great it was from her friend Carolyn Player, who just retired, and she put in for her three years, effective June 30th, 2020, after she'll have completed 36 years in the school system at that point. Janet Haley, who is our ready, set, go lead teacher, really, the facilitator is her title. She has former Teacher of the Year in Simsbury and now in an important leadership position in special education. And lastly, another special education teacher currently with 17 years, Suzanne Riggins, who is at Central School. So, all of these are a motion for the Board to accept the notice of intent to retire of Patty D'Onofrio, Janet Haley, and Suzanne Riggins, effective June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
All right. Good news, of course, is we hold on to those people for three more years, so.
And thank you very much for all their years of service. We're so fortunate to have people who like to stay here, they do good things.
The next set of personnel actions are the resignations that we received over the summer for a variety of reasons, some to pursue opportunities in other districts. Some are taking applause from the profession. Lexi Carter is a special education teacher at Toon Hills who submitted her resignation. Christine Antedorme was a part-time speech and language pathologist who is going to take a respite from her career right now. Chris Barcellus was a part-time teacher in the school district who got full-time work in another district and submitted his resignation. Laura Carlisle is another person who is taking some time away, and Pat Hubeny, our math department supervisor at Henry James, received a district leadership position and resigned his position over the summer. So, the motion, if somebody would make it, goes like this. Moved that the Board of Ed accept the resignations of Alexis Carter, effective July 19th, 2017; Christine Antedorme, effective July 20th, 2017; Christopher Barcellus, effective July 26th, 2017; Laura Carlisle, effective July 30th, 2017; and Patrick Hubeny, effective August 23rd, 2017.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you.
And the happier news than people leaving the school district is the people that we welcome into the school district. So, what we do at Convocation each year is speak for a few moments about each of the new teachers that we brought in. Thought that it would just be a small handful. Some of this other movement ended up at a total of 15 teachers that are new to us here in Simsbury. I'm just going to quickly show you. You don't need to vote on these, so we will, starting at Simsbury High School, where we welcomed four new teachers to the SHS faculty. It starts with Caroline Ferreira, who is a science teacher, very excited to be coming to us with her first teaching job. That is after we had some leadership movement, and Heather Golden, a teacher who's been with us for a long time, has become the department supervisor, so she sort of backfilled what Heather-
She's very enthusiastic. From parents' night, she was very enthusiastic.
Very, you get that first job.
And very tech, too.
Very enthusiastic, yes.
Very nice.
As some of you who have been with us a long time know about the strength of our culinary program historically, and it's had a little dip in the last few years, and we've really been looking to restore a leader to the culinary program, and we think we have found that person in Chef Dan Lestrude, who worked in the restaurant business for many, many years and turned to teaching about culinary arts about seven or eight years ago. We welcomed him to Simsbury. Megan McGrath is another first-time teacher, joining our social studies department for that part-time job. Another teacher left, and she also will be rounding out her work with tutoring work at Simsbury High School. And then lastly, at Simsbury High School, as the Board knows, we made some movements to support the math implementation this year, which moved Jaclyn Petrella, our math department supervisor, into a district position. And then we went out in August to backfill the department supervisor position, not sure what we would find. Well, we did really, really well. Matt Milch is a career change out of the housing industry, actually, where he was a supervisor of large groups of people, and then when he got into teaching, he's taught at the Greater Hartford Academy of Math and Science, which became the Aerospace Academy, and really thrilled to have him join the leadership team at Simsbury High School. Two teachers at Henry James, Jess Anastagia, we got to know her work last year, when she served as a long-term sub in our preschool, and then when a special education opening came at the middle school, she was a great match for us, and we welcomed her to Henry James. And Emily Levis, this was our first teacher we hired way back in May. This was when we knew of a retirement, and she joins the long line of combined bachelors and masters candidates we've hired out of UConn who are producing just excellent teachers these days, so be proud of your state university. At Central School, two new teachers. Cassidy Concinine, another one that we took advantage of a strong student-teaching performance last year. She actually did a special ed student-teaching internship and a regular ed one, and then when we had a first grade opening, Beth Hennessy snapped her up right away. In kindergarten, we hired two kindergarten teachers in the same day. Caitlin Kenny had actually taken a little detour into the business world and got back into teaching when she returned to Connecticut, and she is really just a tremendous candidate and really excited to welcome her to kindergarten at Central School. Squadron Line had three new teachers this year. You'll hear a theme here. This was our student teacher last year, Brian LeBlanc, who had an opportunity to work with Rich Keegan at Squadron Line, and when this opening came, they knew right where they wanted to turn after his successful internship. Shelley Martin served as a long-term sub. She's really all over the country. Her husband is a prof- She's, her, her husband is a professor who's moved to different parts of the country, and she's a very experienced teacher. She filled in for some folks at Tooeon Hills and then Squadron Line last year. I couldn't walk into Tooeon Hills and Squadron Line last year without people telling me, "You have to find a job for Shelley." So I found a job for Shelley. People can stop, and she's going to be in sixth grade at Squadron Line. We're really excited to, to bring her on board. And lastly, joining the special ed team is Will Wesley, whose experience comes up in Vermont and New Hampshire, both as a special ed teacher and a social worker, actually, bringing some pretty unique skills. Tara Phil has two new teachers as well. A number of new teachers in our primary grades. Carolyn Katzman was, this is one of the tricks that happens with budget cuts. Carolyn was the last least senior in Granby in the spring, when our neighboring district was doing, and she was on their reduction in force list, and they actually said, "She's a fabulous teacher. We don't want to see her not have a job next year." They knew we had an opening, and they kind of sent her our way. And we are lucky to take advantage of Carolyn's skills, one year of experience, and now joining us here in Simsbury. And then another new teacher, Brianna Novak-Rich, who had gained experience in West Hartford as a long-term substitute and, and a teaching assistant, and was ready for that first contracted job. And then lastly, at Tooeon Hills, two folks actually associated with special education. The first is Carrie Brady, an experienced teacher specializing in students on the autism spectrum. So Carrie will be working in our Ready, Set, Go program that is located, the portion of it that's located over at Tooeon Hill Schools. And then lastly, the legendary Ginny Damso retired last spring as a school psychologist at Tooeon Hills, and we really had to go out and find somebody who was going to fill big shoes. And Alicia is just a really sharp, articulate young woman with experience down in Washington, DC, in some pretty tough schools, and then was up in Enfield before we were able to attract her here to Simsbury, and we know she'll do great things. So fifteen hires. It was an exciting summer, and we welcome just a great crew to the, to the Simsbury schools.
Thank you very much, Neil. Anyone have any questions? Excellent. Moving on, we can start with our school opening report. Thank you.
So we're going to give an overview from the Office of Teaching and Learning. Neil's going to talk about some enrollment information tonight. Sue on special ed, and Burke will give his highlight of the pictures. Mike, because I know you always.
We leave that for last.
So Erin will get us started.
So it's always exciting to share with you the kind of work that we do over the summertime. Many people think we don't do much, and in fact, we do quite a bit of work in the summertime and have lots of teachers engaged in that work. So we'll talk a little bit about the professional development, curriculum work, the summer academies that we offer, and then our technology landscape. So as we think about our professional development and curricular work this summer, we had over one hundred teachers doing different kinds of projects, whether writing curriculum or reviewing curriculum, and it's just unbelievable. And Sue Piro, my administrative assistant, who is able to keep track of all of that, is just spectacular. So the work that our teachers do in the summertime to update, to really get their curriculum in order for the school year is really good work, and certainly appreciate that. For professional development, we actually started in June with our implementation of our Math and Focus program. We ended the year providing all of our K-8 teachers with their materials that they need with one unit or chapter, as we call them now, that they had time to look at over the summertime. And when we came back in August, we offered a two-hour professional learning opportunity as well in Math and Focus for those teachers. So a lot of focus this year. We have several early release days that will focus and pull our teachers together to do more learning and work around the Math and Focus. Our elementary principals always bring together their leadership team, a character ed team, so that they can get a jump start on the work for the year, and that's been really helpful over the last three or four years as principals begin to start the year. We also have teachers that do their own kinds of professional development, whether they take other college courses, but we also instituted the AP Research. We had AP Seminar. This is the AP Research course, so a teacher was trained in that. Are you in the course?
I am. I'm one of the six students.
Okay, good. All right. So we'll, you can keep us posted on that. Project Lead the Way training with Heather Golden moving into her position, we needed to do some shifting, so we had a couple of teachers go and get the Project Lead the Way training. And we've also begun a pretty extensive dive into professional learning with our NGSS, the New Generation Science Standards. So there'll be a lot of work I'll be talking about of that over the course of this school year as well. So lots of work, like I said, over a hundred teachers. It's really fascinating to, to have them give time to us over the summertime to, to really do that work. As you know, we have summer academies. We have summer learning academies for students. We have a literacy. We have a math, and we have enrichment in writing and mathematics. And so the, it's hard to read the yellow up there. I apologize for that, but in literacy, it was be a better reader, build a better world. In math, tools for building a better mathematician, and the enrichment was focused on those themes as well. So we always have many teachers that step up and carry out that, that program for our students to provide summer learning opportunities for students. Our SAA, our Simsbury Arts Academy, has taken on a new logo under the direction of Shannon Gagne. She, we had a hundred and twenty-one students in grades four through twelve, and they culminated this summer learning opportunity with Legally Blonde Junior. And so they really do a fabulous job, and Shannon has done a great job leading that over the course of the summer. In regard to technology, as Dylan mentioned, we have all of, back in August, you know, for one day, there was this major sort of flow chart of going from table to table in which to get your, your Chromebook, and everything was disseminated at that point. My travels around the high school, I see students using them in various places. I was in the library at one point. A lot of students had them out. Classrooms are using them as well for purposeful, engaging ways in which to enrich the, the curriculum. We also expanded our iPad usage in K-2, so there's more iPads available for students. It's, there's about seven in each classroom that's made available to them. Our innovative technology team, these are teachers that really are energized and interested in really helping others learn about technology. They fall under the direction of John C. Eli Twinek, and those folks have worked hard to continue to really be on the cutting edge of technology, and we have one in each department. So we have that liaison from grades seven through twelve, and then one in each grade level from each school at our elementary schools. We, our STEM and Makerspace classrooms are growing. You'll be hearing shortly that Ensign Vicford is continuing to support our STEM lab at the high school, so that will take on even a greater focus this school year in getting classes to use that space. Makerspaces through our library media specialists are really, you know, emerging well, and in fact, there was a Kathleen McGowan grant that we supported the beginnings of a STEM lab at Central School, and we thought it was quite appropriate for her to begin at Central School because that was the school that she taught at. And so that will emerge, and we'll tell you more about that over the course of, of this school year. And obviously, obviously, we're continuing to keep tabs on security and privacy types of things for students. I know, you know, even with the Chromebooks, students, if, you know, there are Chromebooks, and so there's certain security devices on them that you can't get into certain things. I guess you know that better than I do, but I think we're really on the cutting edge with that as well, and John C. has done a fabulous job keeping track of that. So as we look ahead and we think about the work, obviously, the implementation of Math and Focus is going to be on the, the top tier of our work as we go through this school year. We'll continue to be working with principals and teachers around closing the achievement gap. I just spent the day at a Performance Matters Conference where the state put on a series of, and Sue was with me today, and a few other members from Simsbury. So looking at ways to really look at our data, look at the kids that we need to continue to pay close attention to, and then develop strategies with internally on how we'll close that, work at closing that achievement gap. The profile of a graduate is a new team that I will be spearheading in conjunction. I'll be working directly with Matt on this, but I'll be putting together a group of educators from around the system to really begin to define the competencies, the skills, the attributes, the dispositions that we believe Simsbury High School graduates need to attain as they move through our K-12 system. And what we will do is we will start with looking at that from twelfth grade, mapping backwards to eighth grade, sixth grade, and third grade. And it will be a combined, as you know, there's been a leadership team. Neil started this a long time ago at the high school, a leadership team that meets about five times during the school year. We're going to combine that with a Henry James and SHS so that we have some folks, oh, I'm talking about something different right now. I'm sorry. But the profile of the graduate will be inclusive of all of us. The leadership team is going to be looking at the school start time, and that will be a combination of the high school and the middle school folks, that we will be looking at school start times and keeping you posted on that, and come back and share with you the benefits and challenges if we go further and, and look at the school start times. And we'll continue to look at our classroom technology and what we can do to embed that into our curriculum. So we've had a busy summer, and we've had lots of planning, and we'll keep you posted as the year goes on.
Raise a couple of questions, please.
Sure.
This is the third time in the last, oh, ten days or so, there's been comment from, from, from the district about closing the achievement gap. Matt mentioned it at the, at the convocation, and interestingly, Principal O'Brien mentioned that issue as well when he addressed the parents prior to the open house, and now you've mentioned it here, and I, I just want to comment on. I personally am glad to, to, to hear and see that kind of emphasis on this strategic issue, and I was especially interested in your comment that eventually, probably soon, the district and you folks will be getting together to develop strategies to address that. And I just, I just want to be on record of complimenting you and encouraging you in that, in that endeavor, and I do want to request that at some point this year, if possible, you know, if, if the agenda time permits, it would be pretty wonderful to, to get a report on what those strategies are, so that we have some specificity around the strategies going forward. The other thing I just wanted to mention is about school start time. The publicity about school starting time is getting bigger and bigger and hotter and hotter, and the research just seems to be showing up more and more in publications around the country. And I, just a quick question. Since we don't know much about the implementation of school start time, and I'm sure that's going to come later, should we be thinking in terms that a change in school start time will cost enough additional money that it will be a budget line item?
So that's going to be a significant part of actually what Neil and I will work on, and that would be mostly on the transportation front. So we have to do an entire kind of capacity and transportation analysis. We, the way we sit is a unique way with our transportation schedule right now. I don't want to get too much into it, but we have three different runs, so we have to really take a look at, is it possible to do two runs? What implications would there be? So we're going to start that work shortly, but that would be the biggest cost driver we have to be wary of, Tom, and look through. So we're going to be looking at all elements of it. You know, certainly, there's the, the benefits, the, what the literature says. There are schedule implications, and then there are cost implications.
Got you. Thank you.
And I'm also working in collaboration with other assistant superintendents in West Hartford and other local communities.
Hartford's running a parallel process.
They are, and I had met with them over the summertime, so we're working collaboratively.
Anybody else in the Farmington Valley?
I actually had the opportunity, I don't want to put out any towns right now, but today at this, at this session, I was able to talk to several who are very interested in working with us on this, so.
Thanks.
Anyone else have anything they want to ask?
All right.
All right, Neil.
So from my, the Human Resources Office over the summer, you saw much of my work with that slideshow of fifteen new teachers into the school district, and certainly the collaboration of working with our principals and department supervisors in that work is an important part of, of what we do to bring the best into Simsbury. Once you hire those teachers, you need to orient them, and so we run a three-day, three-full day orientation program that includes, obviously, a welcome and an introduction to Simsbury that Erin and I host on the first morning and really talk about the expectations of the school system and, and the type of culture that they have entered into. We then do, one of the sessions that we get great feedback on is we bring in people who just finished their first-year teaching, and they serve on a panel talking to the new teachers. They were in the chair a year ago, and so I certainly want to thank Lisa Smith from Central School, Jason Stammen from Henry James, and Christina DeVeckis from the high school, who served in that role of survivors, and we choose thrivers from the first year to talk to us, to talk to those folks. We bring certainly some clarity to the evaluation system that they're going to face during one of the sessions that we run, particularly around the goals that they're going to have to set as teachers, and talk to them about the importance of doing that in collaboration with their professional learning community. Sue and Nancy do an overview of special education on, on one of the afternoons, so that, you know, you saw a lot of special educators on our lineup of new teachers. They, they actually use them as the experts, a table experts, helping the other teachers who needed to, you know, just get familiar with some of the processes around special ed. Team training is important. Team is a, is an induction program at the state level for new teachers. In Simsbury, we do this through a master mentor team that Erin and I are actually meeting with tomorrow afternoon that says, "We're doing this work as well as anybody in the state." And Jan Sands at the high school is the leader of that work, and Jan does a presentation. It's a two-year process for our new teachers to go through team, and, and Jan is the one who kind of shepherds them through. This orientation session is the start of what they're going to face in finishing five modules around the professional teaching standards. And then lastly, we take a full bus tour of Simsbury, stopping at every, all seven schools. It's mostly a cultural and historical tour. We point out a few of the other local haunts, and it's an enjoyable time for everybody. It was really hot this year.
It was hot. It was really hot.
And we definitely appreciated the ice cream at the end. In your, in your materials, I just wanted to highlight that you will see the twenty-four new teach, the twenty-four teachers who we hired four years ago who have achieved tenure. And we just wanted to take a moment to recognize them, and I would like you to review those names in your written materials because tenure is an important marker in a teacher's career. It, it happens after you've served in four successful years at the start of your career, and as you can see, four years ago, we were in banner hiring season with twenty-four teachers who we hired at that point who have now come in. Primarily, one of the things I spend a lot of time in the summer is tracking the enrollment. As you know, literally, every Friday, new kids in, new kids out, and we're working very closely with our Transportation and Enrollment Coordinator, Sue Kakamo, and you can see that from our NESDEC projection last year, we were told that it would be four thousand and thirty-six, and on September 1st, it came in on four thousand and thirty-four.
Bravo.
So we're not done because there are some more. It's going to go up, actually. Usually, it goes down a little after September 1st, but we've had some more move-ins in, in the last week, and I anticipate when I bring this October 1 number to you, it's actually going to go up a little bit. One of the funny coincidences on our chart, you can see the elementary, the exact same number of students as last year when we started. The, the largest decline was at Henry James, which we budgeted for because, you know, a larger eighth-grade cohort to ninth grade was leaving the school, and a smaller sixth grade to seventh grade cohort was coming in. So that trend played itself out over the summer. And then in ninth grade, just a, a small decrease, which was also expected with the graduating, graduating class being slightly larger than the incoming ninth-grade class. So right now, we are pretty much on track with, with the number, and I, as I say, anticipate just a small change by October 1st. However, that plays out in class sizes. You know, it's, it's one thing to look at the macro number. The other thing we're tracking is each of the individual class sizes. And quite frankly, at the end of the summer, we saw more classes go one student above the guidelines, or in some cases, two students above the guidelines, and that's something that we felt it was important to make the Board aware of tonight. So to orient you to this, this is the typical elementary class size chart, and what I did, knowing that it would be hard to see, is color-coded so that you could just get a sense. So where we saw the spike is you can see the red numbers. The red numbers primarily at the primary grades of grades one and two are the ones that went a student or two above the guidelines. I'll remind you that our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade guideline is up to twenty-two, so that you can then, you can see on there that there are a number that went to twenty-three. 22 so that you can then, you can see on there that there are a number that went to 23. In, we'll start with second grade, in second grade, we had central schools go to 23 each. Tooton Hills had one at 23 and Latimer actually had a number of move-ins post-August 20th and we saw it spike two above the guideline. In first grade, Squadron Line has two classes that went one student above the guideline and then Latimer Lane again was our place that got late enrollment in the summer. So, we have certainly been communicating with principals and teachers at these grade levels. What I can tell you right now and you'll see in a slide upcoming, we have immediately put additional support into Latimer Lane. With Latimer Lane being the one school up there where you look and you say, those two cohorts are significantly, more than one student above the guideline, we felt that we needed to put some support and we've hired tutorial support in the form of retired Simsbury teachers who are pushing into the classroom during literacy and math block for a portion of the day that they are serving as tutors and taking small groups of students. So, it is, you know, we're really pushing a highly qualified second teacher into the room in a role that is a tutor role.
Excuse me, this tutorial support, I personally had not heard of that before, so that's kind of a new concept to me. Is this tutorial support present throughout the system or is it exceptional right now at Latimer Lane?
It's a strategy we will use when a class size goes above guidelines late in the game.
And we've been using that strategy over the years.
Sometimes in kindergarten, when it's happened, we use para-professional support because there's para-professional support built in to kindergarten and you can kind of increase the hours of that support when a kindergarten goes over. When a primary grade goes over late in the game and you, we're not able to react and add teachers, you can, you know, it's a strategy to add tutorial support.
Interesting, thank you.
You know, and you take basically a half of a day tutor because the math and literacy blocks happen during a certain portion of the day, that's where you really want to push in extra instruction and that's the strategy we've used. We'll keep an eye on these other schools, if they tend, if they stay one student above the guideline, we're unlikely to, you know, we'll keep an eye on it, but it's really where we had that late move-in that you were not able to react to.
Thank you.
These are, you know, we used to get the bump in first grade because we didn't have full-day kindergarten, are these new to Simsbury students that pushed us over or?
I'll tell you, we are watching closely and I'm going to make it part of the October 1 report, we had a number of families move into the complex right on the Avon-Simsbury line that is zoned for Latimer and those late move-ins, I need to go back and look, but a number of them came from there. And, you know, we may need to react to that moving forward in terms of looking at where our lines are drawn with, I reported on the facilities and enrollment last year that not many of these new complexes have yielded children in the school system, this one may be different. And really, the families just started moving in there in June, I think we got the first.
Really interesting how they're over the guidelines in first and second and then Latimer's down below and all the other ones.
Right, right.
Very interesting.
And it's been a while since we've seen this, as you know.
The other thing I would point out about second grade in particular, because second grade, first grade spiked on, a second grade I was watching all summer long and one of the things that I was talking about the principals about, you have to remember that the class size changes in third grade, so one of the things.
Class size guidelines.
The class size guideline changes to 25, so you go from a maximum of 22 to a maximum of 25. So, take the Tooton Hills cohort with 23 and 22, 45 kids right now, if you broke that into three sections at second grade, you'd just be compressing it back to two when they moved to third grade and the principals are actually hesitant to do that. You don't want to be spreading it out only to compress it back together when the moves to the next grade level. So, at this point, we will, I mean, you, once a school year starts, you don't want to be pulling kids away from their teacher and so this is how we will live, I don't anticipate it getting higher than that, but this is where we ended up as of September 1st.
And as schools, as kids move into that complex, they're not all going to be in second grade?
No.
I mean, so.
We hope not.
We hope not, but I mean, the opportunity, there's so much we don't know.
Neil, you may have just answered this question, but is there anything you can extrapolate this going forward, I mean, or does it just kind of work itself out because you said the guidelines increase going forward?
So, it, I mean, it's always been the case that that second to third grade is a crucial part, a place where we watch. Tooton Hills with, you can see third grade at 24 and 24, that actually last year was three classes, that was the one place in last year's budget, we saved a teacher by compressing that cohort. So, that's always kind of a critical juncture where we're looking, so in terms of like, work could itself out, that's where I would point to it.
I mean, I would add this in all honesty, in other years, if we got up to 24 or 25 in a second grade class, we would add a section and we're just not in a position to be able to do that right now with the level of uncertainty, with the fact that we reduced a million dollars at the end of last year with a real eye towards trying to maximize our guidelines, right? So, I think our story, as you'll see and in particular, when Neil reports out on October 1, I think numbers will reflect that and we'll have to have that discussion as we move forward because it's always been a priority we've held, you know, we've been in these situations before as well as Tara and I discussed, I don't want to forget that, you know, when enrollment went up, particularly at Squadron Line when I was the principal there, we would have several classes, one student, two students over the guidelines. So, it's definitely something we need to continue to have conversation on and watch. It's a hot button, so to speak, with parents and Neil and I have definitely had more parent conversations over the summer and good conversations and dialogues about where we are and what we're trying to do to support students in these tough times.
Does the, does the extra support in the first and second grades, I mean, clearly it helps the students, does it help alleviate some of the pressures on having a larger class on the teachers as well?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I mean, they, it's, what, a lot of math and literacy instruction in elementary grades and primary grades is small group instruction. So, if you could have somebody take a small group for you, I mean, that is incredibly helpful as you function in your classroom, so.
And the teachers, what have the teachers told you about the setup that you've set up for them in these classrooms, you've spoken to them?
They are, you know, they appreciate the support, they certainly are trying to convey to teachers, not to parents, that they've got it, you know, that this is, you know, it's not, it's not the situation that you, you know, would look for, but that we've responded appropriately and, you know, it's where you have to continue to monitor because if we have to push in support to other places, we'll have to look at that as we go down the road, hopefully as a budget picture becomes more certain. This, the Latimer Lane one was enough that we said, wherever we go with the budget, we have to make that happen.
And the teachers have been appreciative of your, okay, thank you.
So, I just did want to put a little historical, I want to thank Cindy Frelinger for helping me find this, how many classes are, because 10 was a lot for me and I looked at it and said, we haven't lived like that at all and there was a reminder that, yeah, well, actually there were times we used to live like that where there weren't more than a couple of classes. So, for the past five years, we've been in a situation where you can see, if I go six years back, no more than three classes ever went above the guidelines, but when you went to 10, 11, there were 10 above the guidelines and in 2008, '09, there were seven above the guidelines. Did a little bit more digging, 2010, '11, what, parallel a story of where we are this year, from superintendent's proposed budget to adopted 1.3 million dollars cut. This year, we're at a million dollars cut, so it's a similar story of how you get to this place where you're making decisions that are one or two students above a guideline. So, it's, I think it's informative and why I asked Cindy to do a little digging, so I appreciate her doing that for me. And then, these are just enrollment highlights that it's consistent with projections, it is down 76, that was what was projected by NESDEC, so you are looking, biggest chunk again at Henry James and there's the message about adding additional tutorial support for Latimer Lane, which was the class, the school most impacted by the guidelines. So, the work ahead for my office, summer's always fun, but there's lots of work to do in the school year. On the negotiating front for my Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee, we just have the nurses contract to look for, that's a smaller group and one that will probably begin in the winter to look at. Responding to all of this enrollment information, certainly not only the neighborhoods that I was talking about where we may be seeing new kids, but really taking a hard look in light of the capital improvement project at Henry James that pulled off last spring, doing a capacity study of what would it take to create a sixth, seventh and eighth grade structure at the middle school in terms of a capacity in the building to allow you to look at what could then be an impact on the elementary schools. So, we're going to do that study over the next couple of months, bring it to facilities and enrollment and then bring it to the full board, just to take a look at where we are in terms of that building. As I mentioned last spring, we did the second generation of our Panorama School Climate Data, the principals have been looking at that information, we'll convene the Communications Subcommittee soon for the board to look at that data, but right now, there's a sharing process and action planning process going on at all the schools. And then two initiatives that Cindy and I are actually out on, a Human Resources road tour to the high schools, we were at three schools this afternoon, the first talking about a web-based training school that we've invested in called Safe Schools and this is all the kind of trainings that you have to do for employees, whether it's around things like bloodborne pathogen training or being a mandated reporter training, safety protocols and this is a system where you can create your own or use off of their system kind of 15-minute flipped videos where the system, you assign the training to the employees that need to have that training, you give them a time period in which they need to do it and the system records who does it and gives reminders to those people who haven't done it yet and it's a much more systematic way to say, we've provided the training and we know you've done the training. And so, we've introduced that through Human Resources and it's going to open in October for a much better way to do training than relying on seven principals to manage all of that across the district. And then, we are really excited about an employee assistance program that we are contracting with a new vendor. Our employee assistance program really used to be about, it worked through crack and it was really when people hit kind of a crisis point, there was an ability for them to access counseling sessions, six free counseling sessions as an employee. So, we found a new vendor, Deer Oaks Employee Assistance and so it's, in addition to having counseling services, it has all of that, it's much more based on, before you would need counseling, things that are stresses in your life that you might need advice on, so you can call and get financial advice if you're sending a kid off to college or you have a loan consolidation, you can get a half hour of free legal advice and be able to contract with an attorney at a discounted rate after that. There's all sorts of information that they'll provide for you about what chapter of life you're in, whether it's taking care of elderly parents, sending kids off to college and a much more comprehensive employee assistance program, not just for teachers, but for all of our employees that would have access to this program and our department is really excited to be offering that opportunity to our employees in a much more comprehensive way than our previous program did. So, that is the work ahead, we'll let you know how it goes, but happy to take any questions.
Anything I'm talking about, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Sue, you want to take us into the Office of Special Services?
I certainly will, so very soon after graduation, we take a little bit of a breather and then we welcome back 162 students pre-K through our 21 post-grad program to receive extended school year services. So, there are certain eligibility criteria, but extended school year is really around skill maintenance. It's not introducing new skills, but skill maintenance in the areas of academics, behavior, social, emotional, we have a variety of sites, it could be a classroom site, it could be more of a recreational site where these skills are maintained and just want to give a shout out to Christina Norrell, she's a middle school teacher, she, the torch has been passed from Deb Service who was the E S Y Coordinator for two decades and Christina did a beautiful job in her inaugural year, really making sure that students were ready to go on the first day of school. So, we held two professional development sessions prior to the first day for students, certainly one was for certified faculty and the second was for our paraeducators. Certified faculty, we reviewed the great work we've been doing around the areas of achievement gap, so there it is again, Tom, and I'm going to mention it in just a little bit more. Achievement gap, mental health transition, both those little Ts and those larger Ts, which is very important to us, and our work of dyslexia. So, I will share a little bit more about that, but we looked at our successes there and then planned the work ahead, what is, what is our work going to look like in the 17, 18 school year? We ended that session with some motivation because our work always gets hard in education, but specifically in special education. So, what do we do to increase our capacity and our resilience during those tough times? Really built off the incredible convocation of that message of inclusion and being the change, so it was a, it was a great opening. Paraeducators, a huge part of what we do here in Simsbury, we actually took advantage of the Safe Schools videos that Neil just referred to and had a number of sessions, mandated reporter training through D C F, we did some individual work on para-participation, participation in P P Ts. Also, there is a mandate around dating violence for certified and non-certified staff, so we did some of that, school climate and we ended with our Safe Schools initiative and our protocols. So, that is in its third year of bringing paraeducators back the day before students and it's reaped its benefits, which is fantastic. So, these are the big four that you've heard me speak of for the past couple of years and I said you're going to hear this over and over again for five years. So, I'm starting year three in this new role, but certainly our look at achievement gap and by and large, our achievement gap is really noted by our students with special needs. We, Aaron and I are very excited that we are going to be using Math &amp; Focus as the opportunity for general education teachers and special education teachers to work side by side in developing the pedagogy around high-quality instruction in math and also having special educators at that table to be able to really share their knowledge and expertise as to how disabilities manifest themselves through this curriculum. But we believe in looking at the achievement gap through this math lens because when students, all students, despite ability, are offered those opportunities to really engage in those high-quality learning opportunities, then we believe that that is one part of what's going to close the gap. So, certainly, Tom, you'll be hearing more about that work as the year unfolds. Dyslexia, again, another legislative mandate for us to look at dyslexia, but it makes a lot of sense for us. We have a very robust Subcommittee that is inclusive of both special education staff as well as our reading specialists and our Srip staff. So, we have been working over the past couple of years, this summer, they did some pretty incredible work defining a very, I think, easy-to-implement profile of the dyslexic learner, what assessments we can use in identifying students with dyslexia, but most importantly, what are those research-based instructional practices that have been shown to truly make a difference for students with those needs. Also, certainly, transition, we talk about those little Ts and those big Ts, Deb Kof chairs, Transition Task Force with me, a variety of participants, we're looking to get some students as well as parents on that committee, but the Transition Task Force has done a lot of outreach with our parents, talking about best transition practices, certainly between schools and programs, but also what happens when they, when our students with disabilities either enter college, the workforce, that adult world and so we will continue our work there. And finally, our work around mental health supports. You know, we are looking very closely at school avoidance, we have a pretty robust program at the high school that we are engaging in some further development of around school avoidance. In addition, we're also looking at students' dysregulated behavior. You'll hear me talk a little bit more about the theory of Ross Green, he is a researcher who has done some extensive work in this area, specifically trauma-based and informed instruction and how do we involve parents and students in a collaborative problem-solving model? It's really around, students don't behave poorly because that's a choice, they have a lagging skill and how do we identify those lagging skills and then teach to them? So, more work on that, but pretty exciting. Additional considerations, you know that over the past year, considerations, you know that over the past year, I've had some major changes to the leadership team, certainly with Nancy Forsberg, Katie Crisula, Heather Tanis, Leah Ko, and Christine Golden. There's no doubt in my mind that I have the right people on that bus in special education, and how do we continue to develop the capacity of our leaders to do this work pre-K through 21? The second consideration certainly is service delivery. So, in Simsbury, how do we ensure that we are providing the most effective specially-designed instruction for our students, but also in the most efficient way? And I think that this definitely has financial ramifications in this time of budget uncertainty, so we're going to be exploring that more, and you'll be hearing more about that. And certainly, that leads to finances. As I've shared with the board before, in addition to staffing and service delivery, the areas of outplacements, contracted services, and transportation are the ones that are the most difficult to make projections for. We have a system that we've developed over the course of the past two years, I'm looking down at Burke, because we've worked really closely to do some projections around outplacements. This year, we're going to take on transportation. So, the board will be hearing more about that work as that unfolds as well this year.
Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. A lot of great work. Moving on to Burke.
All right. Well, before we start with the building improvements and pictures, just want to acknowledge that always at the start of the school year is where we are filing our ED001 State Financial Reporting for the prior year. So, that was submitted during that first week in school. I just want to give special thanks to Kira Sheen, who's our Board of Education accountant and budget analyst, and she also pitched in a lot to help our team this summer in other, in other areas. So, as you see in the board exhibit in your packets, we did end the year with a positive variance, so we're pleased, pleased with that. So, jumping into the pictures for, for both some small and larger projects. Simsbury High School, this is just a picture of the lovely old courts that we used to have that we couldn't keep filling the cracks. And so, that's what it used to look like, and now, currently, it's, it's in the developmental stages where actually, the courts used to kind of stack over here, and now, there's going, there's going to be courts here and then back here. So, when you're actually able to drive out there, you can, you can see it better. But we're hoping to get a date specifically later this month for the pouring of the concrete, and then they'll do finished surfaces, and is expected to be completed in October. Another project that you've seen about, I think in our Hartford Current Coverage was the solar panels, and that was with help from the town's Clean Energy Task Force and residents of Simsbury that helped fund that, and that is Andy O'Brien.
That's a nice hat, that, yeah.
Nice hat. So, we're going to do a dedication ceremony for that coming up at the school. A number of pictures here with Henry James Phase 2. We started out with that second-floor hallway. As you can see, it really needed to start over all of the, all the work in the ceiling and the hallways. And now, today, we've got a second floor that looks like the first floor and not like 1957. So, we're, we're pleased with how that's come out. When you walked into the main office, it's now the main entrance, and you used to go across on the right-hand side of the cafeteria, there were student restrooms. So, when they started construction, right after school was out, if you can picture that now, that is the door to the nurses' office, the new nurses' office, which is ADA accessible. You can get wheelchairs and things in and out, so that's a real improvement. And now, there are new student restrooms across the hall on the same side where the locker rooms used to be. And those are also ADA accessible.
Which they weren't before.
And they, they were not, they were not-
Terribly important.
Up to, up to standards. Dylan mentioned the HVAC, which was original to the old gym. So, you used to have units on the inside in the lovely blue-green color, and now, those have been removed, the units are outside, and so you have a cleaner-looking building. Tonight, they set up for a parent meeting-
Open house.
Open house, and you see that, that we have some new ductwork and so forth. So, it's a, it's a clean up, cleaned up the overall appearance. So, moving on to Central School, I wish I had a before picture that really gave it justice. It was a very dark cafeteria. This was during the renovation when the floor was, was pulled out, and now, we have, we have new floor. There are new cafeteria tables coming soon, so it's really going to be quite, quite nice in coming, coming weeks.
Did you rip the floor off all the way to the edge? It looks like there's still hallway here, but you, that whole hallway and everything is gone, right?
Yes, yes. There was a lot of, a lot of painting work and a lot of improvement work in this, in this general area.
That's great.
So, Central School also had some of the AC areas of cooling that were, that were added, and I've got some, some other pictures here. Latimer Lane was one of the four schools this, this summer. So, in the, in some schools, depending upon the type of construction, you see that there are actually, these little units that hang on the wall, those are the, those are the ductless split systems. And then, there's a condenser up on the roof, which is the picture on the right. In some cases, they're actually hung right to the building and the courtyards. And then, likewise, Squadron Line had AC units. Those are, those are systems that are right in the, right in the ceiling. And then, the same thing, you have a condenser on the roof, and Squadron, being a big school, all those boxes were condensers that had to be installed up on the roof, just like the, just like the prior picture. So, there was a lot of work done there. This picture at Terrafill and at all of our K-6 schools, you know, we get a fresh load of mulch, get the playgrounds ready, you know, painting the crosswalks, all those types of things that Steve, Steve Twitchell will make sure that happens before the opening of school. Terrafill School had some energy efficiency work that we did with funding from the utility incentives. So, we had new LED lighting and building automation controls, and both Latimer and Central will have those by the end of, I think the end of this month, roughly. So, we've done that in, in those three schools most recently. So, that is the end, except for Tooten. And again, we see in a larger art space, you see this, the AC units that were installed there in the art room at Tooten. And also, Dylan talked a little bit about the new playground. This was a view of the upper elementary playground at Tooten, and you see a couple of things off to the left. There were some swings, and now, there is also, it's hard to see based on this lighting, but this pyramid here is brand-new, and then there's a little nest here that, that the PTO donated, and the board approved this past spring. So, those are, those are going to be exciting for, for those older students there. So, again, just wanted to give a lot of thanks to Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, for all that he coordinates in all of our, all of our schools. And senior custodians in each school really did a great job getting the schools ready, and our district maintenance team makes, you know, supports all of our schools. And upcoming work, as Neil mentioned, we have collective bargaining. We also obviously have CIP and capital planning for the upcoming budget year, Henry James being a large part of that. And then, the final school is the high school for implementation of climate control, and the focus areas are the cafeteria and the new gymnasium. So, that's what we'll be up to in the coming year.
Thank you so much. Anybody have anything they want to ask or?
Just one quick question. As I recall, the Board of Finance, ASCAS basically told us to put the Henry James Memorial School project on hold for a year. When will that project reemerge in our deliberations here on this board? So, this year, and I think we, Neil referenced it a little bit before, I think because of the continued decline in secondary enrollment, coupled with the complexity of what we don't know maybe coming from the budget, we want to bring to you really a whole other layer of what capacity would look like, and maybe even another option to consider moving forward with that. But we will have a process defined for you on what we're going to do with Henry James, probably at our next board meeting, just to, not, not data and information, but to talk process a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Anyone have anything else? Well, that was very complete. Thank you so much. You guys have been very, very busy, and I look forward to hearing about all of the things you spoke about today again soon. After that, we, I think we're back to public audience.
Can I just say one thing, and I just don't want to be lost, and Matt talked a lot about sending out information to us over the summer. I don't think it went, I mean, I think it went unresponded to. I just want to say thank you for all that. You guys have done all kinds of work over the summer that you've kept us abreast of, and I just appreciate it. And especially with the budget, it's like playing whack-a-mole right now. So, I just appreciate all the work you've done, and everybody's done on it to keep us informed.
Absolutely.
Excellent point. Thank you very much.
Move to adjournment.
Well, we're not quite here.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I guess we are. Public audience, your future business is, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 26th. Tom?
Move to adjournment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you all very, very much.